President Maroon is Mark Bill, so we'll supervise your guy Tanza, town clerk videographer, my David Jones, one Tanza, Stan Oga, Bruce Mellem, Dot myself, Dot Matt, or our president. Select three members. At this time, take a look to see if there's any changes to the agenda, if any. I would like to add that we will have to approve the certificate of highway mileage with no change later on during the highway department section. So it will be under E. Mark Bill's number four is highway mileage, and then we'll just motion to accept that. And as you see, I wanted to move old business item A to the end of the meeting before the adjournment for an executive session if it's called for. Any other changes to the agenda? Here we go. We shall move forward. Review and approve regular meeting minutes from December 15th, 2021. Take a look on page one. All right, any items on page one?
Yes.
Yes, Stan.
Other members of the public.
Yes, sir.
First paragraph, second line from the bottom. The dollar amount that's there is $35,000. I believe it's meant to be $25,000.
That's correct. I knew there was a Peter had Dan had emailed and that amount, $35,000 should be changed to about $25,000. Thank you, Stanford, for noticing that.
Noted.
Anything else on page one?
Yeah, I had a couple of minutes. So Peter, in the next paragraph down in that same section, the third sentence, Mr. Jones noted that Athens had a transfer station. I think what I, I think what I meant to note was that I wondered if they, if they did have a transfer station. I didn't know whether they did or not. I think I asked whether they did. So maybe just Mr. Jones questioned whether Athens had a transfer station, something like that.
Wait a minute, let me make sure I'm looking at the same minutes here. It's not the same thing that says noted that information was limited?
Um, no, oh, earlier in that paragraph.
Oh, there we go. Yes, had, okay, that southern rock trash goes to Rutland. Questioned whether Athens had.
And then on this line down where it says that many residents hold permits and haul their own trash. We should probably say Brookline residents.
Okay.
Just to make sure they weren't thinking about Athens, so.
Got it.
Cool, thank you.
Anything else on page one? Let's go to page two. Stan?
Under the heading Town Meeting Discussion About In-Person Town Meeting on Monday, let's see, below the bold letters in the fourth sentence, I believe what Dot was saying is that, so it's not interpreted as Brookline having a sand pit. Dot, may I just, may I just noted that
Especially.
A special meeting in Newthing about a gravel pit had been discussed. So that's clear.
I have to say correction.
I'm sorry, what change was that going to be?
I wanted you, we need you to add, it says Ms. Maggio noted that a special meeting in Newthing, you should add in Newthing.
Ah, okay.
At the gravel pit.
Got it.
Um, selectmen, I'm not sure how to interpret the last part of that same paragraph. I have a question mark. I'm not sure. Mr. Jones asked whether the select board had the authority to mandate masks in town meeting. If no mandate had been voted in town, that's okay. Mr. Tanza explained that town did have such an authority, okay. Mr. Jones clarified that should this not be done? The question was whether the morning for town meeting could fill this need. Is that, is that meaning that we would put that in the town warning?
Well, I think what I would, well, like it says, I think it made sense to me, but I was the one speaking, so maybe that. I mean, I think I was, my point was that if we did not pass a townwide mask mandate, would merely saying you have to wear masks in the town warning be enforceable and adequate? And that was what Guy was going to look into.
Okay, that's what we were.
I think it makes sense. I mean, it makes sense for me.
Reading it that way, I understand it. I wasn't sure reading that by it, but. Any other items on page two? Page three? Yes, Stan?
About a third of the way down under the topic Select Board Chair Report, Dot Maggio. The proper spelling of Marjorie's last name is Ray, R-A-Y, instead of G-R-A-Y. It's not Gray, it's actually Ray.
Got it.
Thank you, yeah.
Is it Marjorie with a G or a J?
I think it may only be a J. I think there's no G in it.
I suspect.
I think you could take the G out of it also.
Got it.
All the Gs out. Cross them out. One G's.
Anything else on page three? Page four, I have the final ending of last meeting I mentioned. What should be, where it says tabled until reviewed. Okay, council, mayor, all, executive session. Executive session ended at 9:20. No motions or votes were taken. Dorothy Maggio motion to adjourn the select board meeting. David Jones seconded it. Select board meeting ended at 9:22.
I'm sorry, ended at?
9:22.
Thank you.
All right. Any members of the public?
So I just, I'd make a motion that we approved the minutes as amended.
I'll second that motion, David. All those in favor of approving amended minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You mean, now the motion's passed as amended. Members of the public, are there any? No. Town hall, activity, there are no members of the public. Old business, we have moved item 5A to just before the adjournment, so we'll approach that later. We'll move on to discussion of some budget review. We did receive a new appropriation request from the Visiting Nurses Association. It's actually, it's called. Vermont, Vermont Division for Carrots.
And it's not the, well, sir, it's not the Visiting Nurse Alliance?
The Visiting Nurses and Hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire. Which is not, this is different terminology. This is this gentleman Anthony Knox, V N H relations manager for V N H. And. I just gave it there.
I mean, I'm, well, there's a couple of things. There's a couple of things about that. A, the, I mean, if that email was all we got, he doesn't actually ask for any money.
That's correct.
So I don't. I strongly suspect that he is following up, wondering if an appropriation has been made. And I strongly suspect this is the same organization that we've already gotten appropriation requests from. Should I go try to find the folder and we can see that it's? I mean, I guess honestly, I don't know what we would review now anyway, because he didn't ask for an amount, so it's not really a.
He's asking, he appears to be in the second paragraph, making an assumption that a request has been made and wants to know the status.
That's how I.
So he's expressing interest in seeing, and has apparently been advised, or he's employed to make it look like what was, should have been done, was done, maybe, and you know, whatever that implies, but.
I think he's a new acting director. He's a new acting director, and I think he was making sure, because he got the voicemail, which I responded to, a lot of now that we did, in fact, you know, approve the appropriation. He asked me what the appropriation was last year.
V N H is Visiting Nurses and Hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire, and it was a follow-up. I understand. I took him sent it as a new appropriation, so I was questioning that. Next item, it says 2022 23 budget discussion. As you're aware, in the listeners room are the auditors looking over the end of fiscal year 2021's finances. So we don't have anything to discuss as far as the end of the year for budget. I would like to hold, and I put it down for next week, a budget this meeting that's just going to cover the budget. And David, since you helped, you ran the last year, let me ask you, I need some help knowing what I need to get ready.
Well, so here's what I, I. The form that, the worksheet that we have been using. I personally don't find to be the easiest thing to look at, and the Excel part of it is kind of a big mess. So I took the liberty of taking all of the numbers that were in that worksheet and putting them into a different worksheet, which is the one that we used last year, which I think, the same format as last year, which I think was a bit easier to deal with. Yeah, not necessarily saying that we need to talk about it tonight, but if we're going to have, if we're going to have a budget meeting, a special budget meeting, which I think makes sense, I think I'm going to suggest that we not only use this format, but if possible, since the auditors are here, I might even request to bow out and ask them if they think it's possible that we could use this exact same format for the town report. Because one of the things that has been challenging in the past is that we've had to then either, either I or Samara has had to take all of the numbers we've come up with and plug them into a much more involved and convoluted spreadsheet that then gets used in the town report, but I don't think it really has to be that way. Samara didn't think that it needed to be that way, and I think was hoping that we could transition to something less complicated.
Much easier.
So in any event, I I've gone through the numbers a few times, and when we go through it in detail, we can compare back and make sure I made any, I have transcribed any mistakes or anything, but I'm fairly certain that it's accurate to what we talked about.
Well, whatever help this may be, I've gone through some of the other nearby towns' county courts, and there's no standard for that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it really boils down to whether these guys are comfortable with it.
So you can ask them tonight, right?
Yes, yeah, I think I might just, I might.
What do you run that?
Yes.
All right, no, this looks, this looks good because it shows each of the different divisions and/or decreases in the allotment of town funds. So, yeah, this looks much easier than we.
Yeah, I think it'll be easier for us to work with to just finalize things, but then also I don't really know why we can't just have this special town report as well.
This is much cleaner.
I think it's virtually the same information.
It's much cleaner.
It is.
It's cleaner.
Yeah. So anyway, so that was, and I agree with your idea of having a special meeting to finalize it. What I would suggest, I think we did this last year. I would suggest that our special meeting be potentially to talk about the budget, but also about the town meeting warning as well.
Yes, yes.
Yes, they kind of go hand in hand. By then, presumably, the legislature will be active, so we'll have more idea of what we need to do.
Okay, so in the meanwhile, that's what I need, I need, my needs and help in throwing, putting together a warning for us to look at. And we can talk on the phone and I can just type it up.
Well, no, I mean, what I'll say is, because I had to do all of this last year, assuming for the moment, we're kind of jumping ahead. I know this is about town. But assuming that they pass legislation that is the same as last year, almost the same as last year. I have all of the documents that we used for the warning, for the informational hearing, which we have been on. I have the ballot document, I have everything. So it shouldn't be that difficult to just update things with our new information, assuming that's the direction. And if not, I have everything from two years ago, which was the old way, so.
All right.
Either way, I have all the documents, so that's fine.
Very, very good. All right, so. So that was our, what's it, discussion? It seems you're moving quickly, a little hard, I mean, it's probably an executive at the end of that, so. We've got some time here. All right, recycling review. Dan Toward, who was president at our last meeting, we assume, has emailed us each, all of us, with information about the pros and cons for the recycling container at the corner, and his concerns are. Wouldn't everybody have a copy? Have everybody received the same email?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so Dan said that he was concerned, he sent the email again, that he'd be willing to do something similar to what Newthing did, which would be to set up a survey to send out before town meeting. I don't think we have the time to do that at this point. So, and through that survey, that Newthing had decided not to offer the recycle now. That wasn't the way we meant.
Excuse me, there appears to be some sidebar going on that's confusing the sound.
Oh, room in the back. All right.
Accepted.
Okay, so. What are we, all right, so maybe we can talk about.
I can give you a real fast update on the, on the Athens. Sure, Athens has a roadside pickup. They pick up one, one week for draft. The next week is for recycle. It's done by de-camp trucking out of Claremont. They get traffic, they get, they sell trash bags, $3.50 each, or 10 for $35. It is a budget line item. They budget a line item for $44,000. And that's pretty much it. It is, it is voted as a budget line item.
And from what Dan had found out with the sale of the bags, the actual.
I had a call in, but I never got a call back to find out what they make if, for the, for selling the bags, but I never got a call back. They're only open four days, one day.
He seemed to have some numbers that he had gotten, that was, maybe they made like $12,000 or something like that.
That's what they, that's what they sell the bags for. And that's also in the budget as expected income.
So one thing I guess I want to, I just want to make sure, because I didn't have the information in front of me when we were talking to Dan, and I think it's important to point out is that, of course, I understand that, you know, if they budget $44,000 in their budget, that's $44,000 that is paid by the taxpayers. The $3.50 a bag is also money that is paid by the taxpayers. So it doesn't really work to say that that's money that comes out of it, because it is also paid for by the taxpayers. It's, it is paid for, presumably, the people who use the service most pay the most amount of money. But I guess I'd argue that's also the situation we have right now, when people pay however much they choose to pay to deal with their trash. So the numbers would need a lot more digging to. It's, it's still an awful lot of, an awful lot more money than what we are currently paying.
Paying for recycling.
Budgeting for, or being voted for, and committing to. Now, I don't, I don't disagree with Dan that the, potentially at the end of it, the net service to the community could be better, all things considered, than what is currently being offered. But there's all kinds of questions that would have to be asked about whether a vendor would, what we would have to pay in our town, who we would go through. Yeah, there's, like Dan said, there's a lot of investigation to be made. And clearly, it's not something that can be figured out prior to this town meeting, but you know, maybe.
If there was an interest to pursue that if this went down, or if the vote went down or got approved, it might be something for next year, but start a little earlier to us.
I did some quick math, and the overall cost is about, we're about half of what they paid. Taking into consideration the $3.50 for the trash bags, the $44,000, their tax rate, if you took my house and multiplied their tax rate versus Brookline's, my taxes would be $1,975 more. Their tax rate is relatively high. They have a highway budget of, they have highway personnel of $156,000 who benefits and treat people, so they have a problem. The downside, and this is the interesting thing, the town clerk and town treasurer almost get nothing. They get $3,000 for the town clerk, it's open one day for four hours a week, and the treasurer gets, I think, $1,000. So, you know, they're using the highway fund to, you know, and the, and the the recycling funds are on the back of the town clerk and the treasurer. I mean, but that's maybe the way they do it. But the bottom line, their tax rate is 57 cents per thousand, per hundred dollars, or $57,000, $57,000, $1,000 more than ours. So there's something to consider there.
All right, well, I will talk to Dan about.
Sam wanted it.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, in conjunction with Guy, I wasn't, I looked at it as an additive process for Athens, 37, 452, plus 12, 67, so you're, you're up over $51,000. And I just said, okay, that's what they're doing, and I kind of know what we're doing. What does Jamaica do? And Jamaica spends $99,452, and they collect fees on top of that of $51,986. So it's, it's up over $100 if you look at it in terms of an additive process. And they have a.
Jamaica does have a transfer station.
They have someone who's paid full time, $27,000, to not allow the things that Dan is worried about, and we ourselves are worried about. Over the years, talked about this, people leaving stuff, people who are non-residents putting stuff in, whatever. So I look at that as an extreme. When I went on the Dummerston website, the only thing Dummerston pays for, I'm not sure, apparently this is done by population, instead of our assessment of roughly $3,800, theirs is $12,812. And above or beyond that, they only spend, as a town, as a formal decision, roughly $1,200.
Okay, so I'm going to make a point about Dummerston, because I'm very familiar with us, and I was part of a lot of discussions when they. The thing about Dummerston is, remember, Dummerston is in close proximity to the Women's Solid Waste Management District. So after, when the solid waste management district stopped processing recyclables six years ago, whenever that was, when we decided to keep our bins and most everybody else stopped, they very immediately said, well, we're not going to bother keeping bins here anymore, because we can just drive it down there. So their situation is very, very unique in that they are, though they're not part of Rattleboro, they are very physically close to the district office, so I think a very high percentage of people in Dummerston, if they don't pay privately for something to pick it up, they just drive it to there, because it's 10 minutes, it's 10 minutes away.
And the last, the last one I looked at was towns, and their total, they have a, their budget broken up differently. They actually have a weekly item license involved for the solid waste district. And their number is $60,475 per year.
They have a transfer station.
And on top of that, they have trash, trash bag fees on an average, $30,000 per year. So what we are doing with an option of bringing it to the landfill yourself, and I find that when I pay nine to 12 bags of trash every four weeks, I'm paying $12. It's apparently done by the way.
You could look at your tax bill and it's broken out. I pay $128 a year for recycling. That's on a $340,000 valuation, but someone at 250 probably pays a hundred, maybe $100 a year for recycling. It's such a good deal. And the bottom line is that I've noticed recently that the people dropping stuff has diminished somewhat, because they're getting used to the place being tidy and neat, and they think twice before they do that. So we have the best deal, no doubt in my mind, and it seems to fit the, it seems to fit the town pretty well.
All right, so with all that being said, very interested, thank you so much for doing the research for the other towns, and. Um, it will appear on, and it has gone down. The amount that we're budgeting for the following year for recycling will be less than what we budgeted for previously, because of some of the costs, costs that we're being charged. So we'll put it back on the, yes.
Just curious, Guy, where do we have to. Of this year so far, the expenditure on the recycling?
So, give me a.
I'm sorry, the sound is going funny again.
Oh, we're just mumbling here, we're mumbling. Guy is going to get a number for us. David's talking to the auditors briefly, and we'll take it away.
So far, at least as of the end of November.
I know that's Samara.
It was $5,051.25. That's it.
Simply use this.
$12.50 a month.
Because I.
Not so bad.
So it's not $27,000. That's what we budgeted for.
Three, but not this, oh, four, we're in too less, yes.
Well, I have not gone through.
Guy's looking at the number.
I have a report, Guy, at the date of 12/13, and we had paid $5,051.25.
That's. Well, also, the, the rate for the, the trucking went up $10, it's $152 truckload now, but the tonnage has dropped down considerably. It went down almost, it went down as low as $62, it's down now about $75. During the summer, we were paying $125, $130 for the tonnage. So that's, that's, that's just.
Wow, that's like 2014.
Yeah, it's a dynamic number, because if you don't know what's going to happen with recyclables.
Are all the Christmas presents that I've bought you going to inflate that tonnage just as.
That's normal, you'll see a little spike this year.
That'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, we're down, I, you know, I don't see us using. If we're the budgeted amount for the recycling business here, I don't see us getting to that point, to be honest with you. I would say $20, $25,000 is a good, honest figure to keep. And it's still, still a good deal if things stay pretty low. And it's still, still a good deal if things stay pretty honest, I would say.
It's for highballing, that one, seriously highball.
And anybody who has any doubts about it can look on their taxable because the recycling.
Was put in there correctly, yes.
Figure is a separate item on the. If you look on the municipal side of your tax filings, you'll see everything right there, and it'll show the recycling.
How much you pay, how much you set up for you.
Uh-huh.
All right, well, um, I will talk to Dan in the town, or he does read our minutes, but um.
Can I just say one more thing, and sorry, I was, I was, somebody said this, but um, I think I. I understood Dan's point about how Newfane had done the survey. I mean, I think essentially at this point, and especially because last year was an Australian ballot. This year will likely be an Australian ballot again. The, the person's vote as to whether they want to spend the money on this or not. Is essentially the survey of whether you want to continue the service or you don't. So I'm not sure if it makes, if that was all we were gonna ask. I don't think it makes sense to do a survey to send to people.
I agree.
That's what their vote on that town meeting or the ballot is going to be.
And that's the information, the, the assay, that's.
Seven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars so far for December.
This is in five months. At the end of December, we're well at the twenty grand.
So that was.
That's great.
Well, uh.
It's obviously better than the other towns, honestly.
Yeah, like, it's a good deal, but it is what it is.
Okay, well, very good, um. Yeah, thank you for looking at the Jamaica and the Dumerson.
Yeah, thanks for. Yeah, it was a great.
You don't know where you stand now, you see whatever else is wrong.
And I will add that this year, Darlene Wyman, who's the town clerk in Athens, is retiring. So I.
With no money.
Okay, uh, we'll move down to the town meeting. Town meeting, town moderator's, moderator's search, as I had mentioned, that David Parker. Uh, has retired from being town moderator after seventeen years. He did, however, send me another email apologizing for not adding to his retirement notice. That he would be willing to work with me, with and help anybody who was interested in being put up for election for, uh, for that position. And so he didn't want that to go, um. Unnoticed, unnoticed, yeah, so, um. And I did get an email from Gary LaGuardina with a suggestion about uh, checking with Mr. Ballou. If he would like to be interested in, in being a moderator as well.
John, right?
That's what Gary LaGuardina suggested, he might be someone to ask.
Well, that's, yeah.
So, um.
You might be very good.
In the same, in the same uh, vein of looking for a town moderator. We have several, we have many positions that need to be elected, positions that need to be filled. Um, at, uh, from town clerk to select board positions, planners, listers, treasurers and such. And I noticed in front porch forum that they have placed a notice. That these positions in Newfane are uh, available for voting and if people are interested.
Kind of the form, blah, 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 blah.
Right, we don't have to do the form, we don't have to, they don't have to get.
Yeah, no, no, we do, we will.
We're gonna do a form, they don't.
If we have Australian ballot, we will.
They'll have to do, if we have Australian ballot, assuming that the legislation that they passed is the same as last year.
Yeah. Yeah.
People will still have to sign a form that they want to be up for that nomination. They don't have to have a, they won't have to have, uh.
Fifteen percent of everything, yeah.
Fifteen percent, whatever the percentage was, they won't have to have signatures, just to stand on something.
Just saying they're willing to do that position, like we did last year.
Yeah, that's.
We all had to sign that little form saying we were.
Right. Right. The thing is, don't confuse things that Newfane says about their process for their elected town officials. Because their elected town officials have always been by Australian ballot. So they, if, so that process, a permanent Australian ballot process. You do have to get signatures from fifteen percent, blah, 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 whatever. Again, assuming that the legislation that they passed this year is like the temporary legislation they passed last year. They waived the signature requirement for towns that were only temporarily voting. To become Australian ballot, like we did last year and would presumably do this year. But you still did have to come in and sign something.
Yes.
I don't remember doing that myself, but I must have been.
Well, you weren't up for reelection.
Was up for reelection, no.
But um, anyone who was up for reelection, like myself, I hadn't thrown one out. But the treasurer had to, the, whatever, who's ever up for reelection. If you are already elected and serving a term, you just fulfill your term obligation, like.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You should wear your socks around.
Well, I, I suppose what I'm getting back to, going back to this, is that we should really.
Yes, sorry.
Let the community know that there are gaps in our municipal.
Yep.
Position. Well.
Positions that, or will be open for.
I guess what I'd say is they're not only, I mean. Last year, we sent out an email and I think posted on front porch forums, should we did it.
I think so.
Of all the positions that were going to be.
That's what I'm gonna, that's.
Whether people are, all the open positions need to be publicized.
Right. Right, and that's what I was gonna ask to this point, if you would consider. Putting together a list like Shelby did last year. That says Brookline has these positions that will be voted on or are open for the coming year. Which would be our listers, our, our one year, two year, or three year select board positions.
Yeah, and discussion about that also.
Planners and so on and so forth, you're looking, what's the matter, you look very worried.
I am.
It's easy, Quinn, but the bottom line is, I think, until, I, I'm almost sure that this Thursday or Friday. The legislation will act immediately on a bill for the town clerk's sanity. So that they can determine whether we're gonna have to be forced to do the Australian or do the embarrassing. I think it's gonna happen real fast, so.
I think.
Before you put that letter out, I think, once you know for sure, then we can say, come into the town clerk's office for the. Necessary um, candidate recruit, candidate form.
So probably what would make sense would be at our special meeting next week. As part of the town.
Mm-hmm.
Meeting slash town warning thing, we figure out what we want, what we need to put out.
Exactly, so I'll put it on the agenda for the next, for next week's budget, uh, town meeting, uh, report.
At that time, yeah.
That would be good, all right. All right, um, town moderators, and so discussing the Australian ballot requirements and so on and so forth. We did get, um, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, uh, has on their website, uh, and I read through the descriptions of. For example, Act sixty in twenty twenty-one and what they did, so, uh, they are working from their past history and, and. And David, if you have a paper.
Right, I mean, we have all of the, we have everything we did last year, which. I have read a couple of things that imply that they're going to change the legislation slightly. But I think that's really just to avoid any, apparently there were a couple of towns. That misunderstood the legislation and thought it allowed their select boards to permanently change their town meeting to Australian ballot. Which it totally didn't do, but somehow, some people interpreted it that way. And apparently even some town attorney's interpreted it that way, so. The bit that I've read leads me to believe it's gonna be pretty much the same in function. But they might change the wording of it so as not.
More clear.
To make it very clear to people that this is only a temporary, one-time thing, not a permanent change.
So what I would like to do is put on the agenda for our special meeting, uh, if we must. A duly warned that the Australian ballot will be taking place if the legislation dictates that that option is there.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I would suggest is probably going to be the case would be that our meeting on the nineteenth. That we're gonna have multiple agenda items related to this. The first one is going to be, I mean, assuming that all of this happens and that. The first one is going to be us voting on whether we wanna have Australian ballot.
Well, I was gonna say you do that next week, I bet.
And then, well. And we could do it next week, but I think it might be. Better for us to do it as part of a.
Right, and you got one more regular meeting.
Okay.
Um.
I could be wrong, but I.
Because it, it would be hard for us to, it would be hard for us to. Publicize an agenda for something that we don't yet know whether. There may be particulars about it that we need to discuss.
Okay.
Before we formalize the warning of it, so I'm just not sure that that's.
Fine, I understand what you're saying now.
Likely being well done by next week, but.
For the nineteenth, I think.
The nineteenth, we have to do it.
Okay, so I did see that, I had noticed, we have to do this, this and this, so that, that makes sense, Sam?
Sorry, Sam, you were.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I interrupted a long time. Uh, I own, I believe that we had some material yesterday after the VLCT seminar. That, uh, it indicated that such a change would need to occur at a. I see.
A regular meeting.
A regular. Uh, I, I gave you wrong, but that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's a duly warned meeting. Uh, which could be, but that.
Right, but I think for lots of reasons, it would be better for us to do it. I mean, we'll prepare, all, what I'll say is, of course, we will have to prepare. Our warning in advance, because the next thing we'll discuss after we vote to. Have town meeting by Australian ballot is we'll, we'll have to vote to approve the warning, which will have to be structured. In a particular way that is different than it would be structured if we were at a.
Time meeting.
Physical town meeting, but.
Right.
But other than that, there's no reason they can't have it in the, in the same meeting.
Perfect. Okay. We're in luck, good. Uh, new business, moves on here, members of the Brooklyn Meeting House Committee, listen.
The appropriation that we had, no, not the appropriation.
Speak louder, please.
Oh, I can do, can I just use some water and one more dot?
Um, thank you. It's a public meeting, yeah, you got a phone.
Never mind, never mind, don't worry about it.
Okay. Uh, where am I, all right, under new business, members of the Brooklyn Meeting House Committee would like the selector to review and approve the request for proposal for schoolwork that needs to be done at the church. The browser reformer would be the newspaper used to publish the bid when approved. Uh, the funds for the, this work will come from donations, pledges, fundraising. And monies that were left by the ladies but never with association. Um, it's not coming, it's not asking, we're not, they're not asking for an appropriation for, from the town for this. It's coming from their own funds and fundraising. Um, so we had a chance to, to look this over and, um. It's there, here is addition, it's a carpentry repair and painting. And it has some items in here that probably needs to be reviewed and rewritten so that. It says that, uh, the town select board reserves the right to accept the bid that serves the best interests of the town of Brookline. There are some legalese terms that need to be added onto it.
Oh, this is the proper RFP.
And I'm wondering, what do you, I thought now that I've been looking at it, I think it's. Too bulky for one RFP, it's like two different jobs here.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Correct, it's the carpentry work and the painting work.
But don't, isn't the lift needed for both of these things?
Yes.
So it's.
Yes, very absurd.
I mean, do we. It doesn't seem cra, I mean, I, not that I know a lot, but looking through it, it didn't seem crazy to me to think that the same vendor would do all of this.
The same vendor wouldn't do all this, is, is that.
No, that would, essentially, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I, maybe, I'm probably not the right person to say that, but.
Ah, see, that was my question, I, I looked like it was two different, one a carpenter and one painter.
Well, it's highlighted and highlighted, but, um, I, I'll, I'll keep my points to the end. I, I, I'll go along here, everybody else has to say, and I got a whole bunch of points.
Well, there was also a question that we talked about earlier this year about the, uh, bats again. And whether we take a look at the. Sequence that, that these jobs should be done in. The removal of the, the bats is important, so that's sort of like a third job. And I'm thinking that one needs to get done before it's the flashing and then the flashing gets done before the painting. And there's no mention about the bats in here, so, um, I don't know what you all wanna. We can table this.
Well, I guess, and wasn't there also, so the power wash?
Yeah.
We said that's, I mean, I saw an email from Carrie saying.
I know that too, that the power wash, and it's like, ah.
No, that's it, no, what usually happens to this kid, well, it has nothing to do with the flashing.
I'm confused, I'm confused.
It has nothing to do with the flashing, it has to do with painting. And like, like Mom and I did with the school, they came in the very first day. And they power washed and remediated the mold in the entire building, and they said, see you later, see you tomorrow. This, of course, was summer, wait, waited for it to dry, and then they moved forward. Um, so to say, it's, it's proper to have. Power wash to remove mildew, mildew and dirt in the painting and steeple. What I, where I have my issues. I concur with Doc with my, with the issues that she had. In that this is really a three-prong, in my estimation, a three-prong project. One, you remediate the bats. Two, you do the flashing repair. And three, you do the exterior painting of the steeple. To ref, to, to, um, uh, kick up your memory. The first quote that we have is from the guy in Keene, New Hampshire, which is basically five thousand seven hundred dollars in putting the lift. Am I going too fast, Peter?
Uh, no, this is mostly discussion.
Yeah, you don't need to actual, okay.
So, in saying that, if you take one entity being the remediation of the bats. You can, we can put it out to bid if you want to again, whatever, and redo that for five thousand. What we have now is basically five thousand dollars, and I have a quote for seven hundred dollars for a, for a, for a lifter name. Put that to the side.
So it was five thousand just to get rid of the bat?
Correct, correct, and that's a, just to reflect, just to, uh, kick up your memory. That's doing the entire steeple building and the sanctuary with a year's guarantee.
And can I just ask, has the bat remediation been discussed by the committee of doing that?
They mentioned it, but they, it was not part of this construction because they wanted to make sure that they had, that they are. Going to use the pledged money. The pledged money can't be used for bat remediation, so they weren't going to, uh, address it that way. The pledge money from, uh, Mr. Culver.
Okay.
Okay. First, before I go further, because since we're on tape, I, I really wanna make a point. That I, I'm really quite, um, elated that they're, they're trying to move forward and trying to get these things done. That's, this is all real positive, uh, just because we don't, just because we don't agree with the way they did it, I. That has nothing to do with it, this is great, now, when I, when I look at it. So the one entity being the remediation of that. We can do whatever we want for the bidding of that, already told you about the, uh, about the lift, separate that for a second. Then you take the flashing, but this is, this is excellent, except. I have an issue, several. One, the ceiling of the nail heads and knots on the painting part. And repair and remedy, you use clamps on the painting part, that doesn't seem right. And. Both the flashing and the exterior painting are gonna need, are gonna need lifts. In saying that, I think it would be appropriate not to include the lift in the bid. And, which is what we did with the, with the church, excuse me, with the school. And, and find out, and get, we get our own lift. And there's a whole different discussion about that, which I've already done a lot of research about with three different people. So it's no really reason to get into that. What we're trying to decide now is to re, redo the, the RFPs so we can put them out soon. Um. And get some responses before the year starts, which is all good, everything's good, everything's good. One thing I'll know, I can only speak for one vendor, probably, I'm not even sure of this. The person that did the, the painting for the school. He says he'll do it, he'll have it done by the end of the year, we don't have to worry about that. But the other issues, and I, and I don't think we'll have a problem with the man from Keene, New Hampshire, I think he could come in, set it up, whenever in the spring, get that all straightened out. The flashing, obviously, any, any of the carpentry work, I would suggest that we, to be completed on before October fifteenth. I don't particularly think that's such a great idea for the flashing. Go ahead, Doc.
I'll have to say that I put in the date because I said, we have to have more information for people, we have to have
Okay.
Be completed by, the completion by date, so I think we should need to I, I don't want to sit down, I'm working with you, because I'm on the committee, I don't know, you or another person on the select board wants to sit down, but it has to be rewritten with some, certain phraseology about, uh, the town has the right to accept or reject bids based upon that, and that has to be completed by, and a certificate of insurance, and all that information needs to be put into the bid, and when the bid has to be handed back to us, and, and when it's gonna be opened and, and reviewed, so, Stan?
I am feeling a lot like yourself in that it does appear to be two distinct contractors. And the term flashing repair, I was up in that school with Chuck Catter, so, so many years ago. I mean, we placed this area, the actual bell tower, the bell area, because what was there was very inferior. And I think Gary Gordon cut the wood into a super job.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and one of the things that Chuck and I did is, the spacing between the clamp boards is inappropriate, they don't overlap in many areas. We ended up filling those spaces with spray foam, because they don't overlap. And if we're ultimately looking at sealing that up, so that the bats don't come back in, nor burrow their way through something that becomes frail and powdery after a while. It might be who us or the, the committee to look at clamp board and flashing repair. Because there were some clamp boards that were, uh, when they were installed way back when, nothing against the people who did this, they weren't full-size clamp boards, they were varying sizes. Some were defective to begin with in terms of their size, I mean, it would go over like this, now these chunk taken out for the rest of it. So, there were issues with that, and if, I remember, our goal is to seal it, uh, so that we don't get more bats, and to make it structurally, uh, uh, what, being on the National Historic, National Register is all about, it, it would almost, I guess, my concern is, are they aware of that ultimately? That, that condition is just
That's, that's, except, not except, in addition, I would imagine that Carrie Born put that together, I'm guessing.
Because a lot of this came from the, the National Historic Registry application, where they said, what needs to be done, and what are you working on, and then most of the information came, because I was there.
Okay, but that leads me to saying that, I, I just have a feeling Carrie's gonna have a good eye on this.
Yes, yes, yes.
I, he will, what bother, what is a concern, and I have trust in Carrie, she's good at what she does.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't wanna override his opinion on this completely, but I would like someone there on the committee to address the fact that the fellow who you and I met with at the church said that below the bell area, there was a two-inch gap all around that. Now, I don't know whether that's a flashing issue, whether it's a siding issue, but he specifically referenced that as part of what his material costs was gonna be, or included in his redoing that.
He would be doing some of the ceiling.
He said he was gonna seal the area, now, I don't think he's gonna spray foam, but that was a question.
Revisiting that is a good idea, I have the bid at home, I don't have it with me, I still have it, it's a good idea.
So, there's things that need to be pinned.
Yeah, can I suggest that you guys collectively meet with Carrie and/or other people on the committee to
Clarify.
go through and restructure this?
Good idea, I think we should table this for now, and there is a meeting on the evening of the eleventh, January eleventh, that's here at Town Hall, Tuesday, next Tuesday, on the eleventh, at six o'clock. And, uh, maybe before then, I can put, get some of the terminology that's, the legalese that I know has to go into the newspaper, so that we can always plug that in, and then we can discuss it, so I'll be at the meeting, because I'm on the committee, anybody else?
I would recommend it, I would like to.
I, I would be happy to show.
Alright, Stan?
I'll, I'll, I'll see.
Check if we can see if we can do that.
Um, but if that's cleared up, and we get the RFP straightened out,
We can afford that next year.
before the end of January, we're gonna put out RFPs, that's good.
But the other thing I wanted to say is that I think the, the flashing slash siding should be separate from the exterior painting.
Uh, we're
You know, you, you brought that up there, and I think that's a true distinction that needs to be made, and I doubt if one contractor
Oh, okay, yes, yes. Well, I Well, uh, Stan, if you look down there, repair and re-nail any loose clapper, that's something by a painter. But I know it.
Correct, correct.
And sealing nail heads and knots, I'd like to see those removed and put into the flashing repair part, that should all be, that's all carpentry work.
Yeah.
They come in, they clean, they, they, they don't seal, they, 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 they strip that, they scrape any loose paint, they pry, this is what they do, and, and this stuff here should be up there.
I agree.
So we can clean that all up, that's easy stuff, but I'm, excuse me for getting all excited, I, I don't like it, or this, I just started
I, I'm pretty sure addressing it early in the season, but
Yes.
Well, I, I said, the people, the painters are getting their schedules in order, and, and if the longer you wait, the less time you're gonna have to get in schedule.
Yes.
So, and, and looking at the timeframe, so, alright, we're gonna table this out this time.
Uh, cost. So, initial, from what I understand, from from what I've experienced, from the painters that I've spoken to, for the state, steeple, then, of course, it's not now, everything's changed, somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars to do the steeple.
Really?
Five, yes.
And they do a That's cool for fifteen, but they did the steeple's
Yes. Well, that's then.
Wow.
That, that was several, you I took one, two, two or three, two pay, two painters, and they were both very close, right on that fifteen grand, and if I remember right, Leanne did a feeler out, and, okay.
Yeah, we can't discuss that, it's gonna be a bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, wait a minute, total cost, we gotta discuss, or you wanna, we select to redo the bid?
Well, they're gonna do what they need to do via their expertise, their labor, their insurance, they're gonna set their rate, so we're gonna get numbers, and it's up to us to say, you know, accept it or not.
Don't worry about that.
Hard to know, hard to know.
Yeah, we're worried about that.
Right.
Okay, I was just trying to update everybody, but I thought this is gonna be a total for the three projects, well, well, but it's gonna be well on excess of twenty thousand.
Well, I, I, the caution, don't give any ideas if it's gonna be less, you don't wanna say more.
Right, yeah, good point.
Not unless you're talking about the whole, we have to end up
Alright, so, we're, we're on, um, we'll table this right now, we, uh, uh, we're invited to, I'll, I'll let Leanne know that, uh, select board members may be coming to a meeting on Tuesday here at six o'clock, just to help, to reorganize this a little bit, I'll get the legalese together, and, um, that would be great, I agree, it would be nice to see some work getting done on that as well. Alright, so it certainly is a step forward. Alright, moving on, um, reports, Town Clerk, Mr. Tanza, that's you.
Um, well, it's been a wonderful two-week vacation out in Arizona, we didn't have to do too much,
I totally
uh, and it was well, well enjoyed, and I wish everyone a good new year. But going forward now, dog licensing is started, we do have the dog license, and that's available, the, uh, regular clerk things that are going on have retreated to a back normal, uh, real estate is, um, quiet at this time of the year anyway. But, uh, there's still a lot of end-of-the-year stuff that we have to do, and looking forward to elections, because we're not only gonna have town meeting, but we're also gonna have the school budget, which will be in March also, that's another election. So, um, it's gonna be a busy town, time in the office, I'm not sure what our role will be, whether we have to mail out absentee ballots, or wait for people to ask for out, absentee ballots, but other than that, everything's good, Gwen's doing the, uh, the books, and, uh, you know, that's a slow, pain in the neck, uh, thing, but it's a lot less expensive than having an outside vendor coming into it, which we will at some point have to do, uh, other than that, everything's good.
Alright, excellent, thank you, Mr. Tanza. Um, alright, Town Health Officer, with that head on, uh, I'm dealing with a domestic dog complaint of, um, and it's killed a couple of ducks and injured a couple of others, determined that the dogs were not licensed or vaccinated, they were, I put them under a ten-day weight rabies quarantine. Uh, yesterday afternoon at three thirty was the tenth day, the attack happened on Christmas evening, um, so this is what I worked on. Uh, but the, I went over yesterday to the residence, and I, uh, hadn't bring each of the dog out on the leash, took pictures of them, they were obviously in good health. Uh, so we got the dog's names, breeds, age, sex, so on and so forth, uh, on, they have registered for a rabies, rabies for those dogs on January tenth of the new Humane Society, uh, I'm following up with letters, and they will have to come in and register the dog, so that was an issue. Uh, we were also just in discussion about, uh, reimbursing the, uh, the duck owner for replacement cost of adult ducks, because again, it was, uh, three were killed and two were injured, so that's what I was working on. Uh, there was also a call, um, before Christmas about two cats on a resident's property, the resident would like to keep the cats. One of them, the resident recognized as a cat that she caught on her property last year and brought to the Humane Society. Turns out it is microchipped and owned by a resident, uh, that I have contacted, and since the cat that was microchipped continues to come down to this other resident's house, and that resident was willing to transfer ownership, because he couldn't keep the cat on the property, um, the second cat
That kind of story.
Yeah, the second cat was an intact male, and is not, was not, uh, and I said, so you can keep that cat, because it's not coming from the shelter, we don't have an owner on it, so, anyway, so cats and dogs, that's what we, that's what I was doing. Alright, um, so that's those two cats, alright, number three on my list, current contract for Brookline's road materials on file. I asked Judy for copies of the contracts for highway maintenance and such stuff, because we're doing stuff with FEMA, and I just started to look for you, and get more familiar with things, and I got the copy of the, the, of the plowing and the sculpting, and so on and so forth, um, in the past, there was this nicely designed contract, um, I think Guy, when you were the, uh, well, actually, I saw, yeah, it was when you were the, uh, um
Road Commissioner.
Road Commissioner, you set this up the date, but we don't, we didn't redo it when the new two-year contract went out for AS, AS Clark, who won.
Right.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna ask that the contract just be reissued
Yeah.
sa- same terms, it's been stuck to, it just talks about the liability, the article, so on and so forth, and then we'll have it at the next meeting for us to sign. Meanwhile, I'll just pass it around, if you just wanted to take a look at it, so I'll have that for the next meeting to sign, and you can do AS Clark consensus, they're the ones who do our, our roads. Okay, um, yeah, yeah. Alright, number four, request for three, okay, um, I did receive, and I shared with you all, the returned email dated December twentieth from Suzie Porcamoche, that she, yes, is indeed interested in doing a three-year lease for the Sunny Lane daycare, and, uh,
Little peanuts.
I'm sorry?
You said Sunny Lane, yeah.
Uh, Suzie's Little Peanuts, I think, yes, so, um, she has some concerns in that, and we'll be addressing them as we go along, but, uh, part of our executive, our executive session will be to get that lease, and I'll get it to her this month, so she can return it to us, and she needs to negotiate anything, she can come to a select board meeting, and, and we'll do that as well, so that's, that's moving on. The last thing on my list, we've been discussing, we've talked about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar municipal bond that was taken out eleven years ago to do the bridge by Putney Mountain and Grassy Brook Road, and then the town got a grant, and the municipal bond, which was sold, didn't have to be used, so we end up paying ten thousand dollars a year plus interest, and we paid back eleven years of it. The money, so we have about ninety thousand dollars left in the account. It can only be used for bridges and culverts, now I know we felt the pinch with all the extra work that had to be done for the storm, uh, Storm forty-six twenty-one that occurred in July of this year. And so, in order to make sure that we have, but we don't expect to get FEMA reimbursement till May, maybe June. But we spent eighty-something thousand, ninety-something thousand, maybe more already on FEMA work, so, I would like, uh, to ask our treasury, with the select board's permission, to look at the accounting that would have to be done, so that if we're getting tight, that we could transfer some of the liability or debt that we have some, accumulated because of the storm, to fix the culverts, say on Putney, the thirty-one culverts on Putney Mountain Road, and the one down here, that that could be billed against this, and then when the FEMA money comes in, reimburse it. So, I just wanted to, Guy, as Assistant Treasurer, do you think this is feasible?
Okay, uh, the, right now, we're, we've spent sixty-nine thousand dollars more than we've taken in for this, this little year. Uh, we do have the hundred, ninety thousand dollars, and we have eight thousand dollars in a restricted fund, and we had eight pounds from last year. Um, we have two more tax, two more tax payments due, that should generate about ninety-three thousand dollars for the town side. Um, so, I think we're in relatively good shape, because as you remember at the FEMA meeting, I asked the FEMA representative if he thought we would have this money by the end of the fiscal year, which June thirty, and he was pretty, he said absolutely, he was so I would take that as a ninety-nine percent thing, because it's always that one thing.
It's the federal government, though, I just wanna say that.
Right. So, and, so basically, we'll, when it's all, it's all said and done, I think we're gonna be close to one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Of that, we're responsible for seventy, seventy-five percent will be reimbursed, plus another twelve percent, so I'm thinking the town would be on a hook for about twenty thousand dollars, which is palatable, because we do have those funds in there with our thirty-nine thousand dollars set aside for outside vendors and so forth, so that's good. As far as the other stuff, the paving and so forth, with the ninety-three thousand dollars that we will generate in the next two collections, if everyone pays, and pretty much everyone does, uh, we should be okay. The only thing I, I wanna warn about is that, um, we have to use that money, that ninety thousand dollars must be used for culverts and bridges only, but like I say, Robin P. and Big Paul are working around things, as long as at the end of the fiscal year, we still have that ninety thousand dollars
We pay that, right.
We're okay.
Exactly, so if we have the need, it may come up again later on.
Right, yeah. Totally, and I think, I mean, to your point, the reality is, we have to use significant amounts, amount of money
Yeah.
to repair culverts.
That's true.
So there, I don't see any reason why we couldn't justifiably be using that money if we need to.
If we have Right.
We didn't use it.
I didn't want to skip on, like, say, I, I gave Mark permission to go out and buy more gravel through, for the roads, because we're having a mud season again. And so I didn't want not to be able to have our current residents not have the road, and what their dirt roads maintained to the standard that they want, because we were short on money. But if we need to, that's where we're, we're gonna have to do, as long as we, accountability is all legit.
Right, so basically, in our, our budget that we have set for twenty twenty-one, we have money for culverts, which now you can take some of that money that we get from FEMA, and apply it toward those culverts. Uh, the culverts weren't, um, destroyed, uh, they were, uh, they were, the, uh, surrounding areas were, were, you know, unindated and so forth. So we can replace those culverts with the money that we have from FEMA, and that would take care of that, and then, you know, as far as the bridge, and also some of the funds from that ninety thousand dollars, which we pay back ten thousand, thirteen thousand dollars a year, so, it's kind of like a home equity loan.
Exactly, so I'm just gonna say, I saw that, I wanna, I said, this might be where, you know, they, they are may not, I mean, they say by June, but we don't know, uh, if, if we get the money back, but realize that during next summer, we will be continuing with the repairs. Uh, we have eighteen months from January eleventh to finish all of the repairs from that storm, and so we'll be going into the next fiscal year still owing money, but if we're going to rent an excavator, which we'll talk about shortly, FEMA will pay a hundred percent of it, so that's good, if we're, if we're using it to do FEMA repairs, they will cover that expense, so we may have to make sure we have enough money. I don't, don't want to I don't, don't want to. I don't have a handle on like, this is what we got and every month, I, I, I'm, I'm worried about that. So I don't.
Well, I look at the numbers on a regular basis and
Cause I do too.
The bottom line is that I think we're okay.
Okay.
Uh, but we still have to be careful because we have money that we have to have for the solvency. We have money for some other grants that we have to match. So it's not all as easy as it looks.
Yeah.
But, uh, at this point, we're okay.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, I will move on to, uh, building commissioner report, Bruce Miller.
Time's up. Good night. There's something important. First off, just one, one thing. I came into the town office today to, I, I had noticed last week that two two traps were sprung, but no mice. So anyway, I decided to come back later on, which I did today, and visit all of my traps, rebait them. And I have to apologize to Gwen because I have nothing for her lunch and it's been that way for three months now. We've had, we've had no, no mice at all, zero for about three months now, I think. That was tracked actually. And the corner over here, which I was really looking to see if we had nothing. So we're gonna seal that in the spring. But we've had zero and I, and I not only looked at the traps, I took my flashlight, went around all the cells and looked around to see if I saw anything. So I had to. I don't see anything that was anything.
That's very good.
I did see a couple mouse, uh, uh, mouse boos underneath the, the register in the bathroom.
You did?
Yeah.
Well, it's all been reset and rebated, so we'll see if I can change my attitude towards it by getting that for lunch.
I, I have looked at WW or had seen that particular phone for roads and they're out of it and they haven't ordered it or hasn't come in in the last two months. I saw it at Perkins and Perkins, uh, Perkins over in, uh, West Chesterfield and I, I looked there twice over the last sixty days. And they have not reordered it. So when I next go over to Keen Home Depot, I'll pick up a can, cause I was just gonna find it and do it. You know, uh, that outside, if you don't object.
I don't care. Okay, uh, move on. Um, I, I've been waiting on Coda and Coda to come back in to do with me a complete analysis of the system because I think I communicated to you all last time that things are not going well. Um, just because of the way the system was designed and I have been involved in this for seven years now. I realized at a certain point, I said last time, that I don't feel like I was finding to take control of the entire situation. I'm letting people come in and fix it, da, 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 okay, we're good, see you later. Whereas the, there was, um, the whole system just doesn't function right. Okay, in saying that, uh, I've been waiting on Hiram Knapp, uh, who's a guy that has been doing for thirty years from Coda and Coda to come and to call me and, and meet with me. And he called yesterday afternoon at three thirty. So great, I was gonna hold up because I couldn't get, I couldn't reach Mark because I wasn't him involved, but that didn't really work out. I'll talk to you later about that. Uh, and so what we did is we met at four o'clock and just before that I had gone in and went to the office to talk to Stephanie for a minute, tell her what we're doing. And they had an overflow of the toilet. And their response, their, their thing was, oh, the drain must not be right. But so, okay, well, I didn't say anything to it. Then Hiram Knapp was just about coming in at that one, make it real quick. Uh, Stephanie had emailed me at two forty-seven yesterday afternoon. By three forty-three, she had called Harry Bogdan to come in and try to straighten the situation out. Whatever. I never knew anything about it until I came in there at four o'clock. And Mrs. Bogdan, I don't remember her name, works there and shut the valve off. But basically, what appears to have occurred was again a stuffing down the toilet again with stuff. And Hiram Knapp and I looked at, cause we were downstairs anyway, looked at the drainage. There was, they're implying that the drainage wasn't right. The drainage had been rechecked about three years ago by, um, by Scott Paul that we had to rehang some.
Yeah, I remember that.
We had some issues with it. So that was all re-inspected. So on that assumption, I didn't call up and ask her and all that. I emailed Stephanie back yesterday, this morning and told her it's gotta be a clog. It can't be an overflow of the, of the closet, the water closet, because you have that overflow. And the only other way is water coming out of the toilet and splashing on the floor. And that's a constant running on because it got clung. So Harry Bogdan could not fix it. And so I, it's nicely sent to her an email. You probably have a clog. It's probably the same as before, months ago. You need to call for monsoons or a drain. Then I came there today at twelve o'clock. That was first thing in the morning. And Stephanie was there, she didn't mention. Which is a good, my, my purpose to go to see Stephanie was to tell her that Hiram Knapp's coming back next week. Probably with Sean, who also works there, and with me and maybe Mike Mark to, to visit as well to back out of here. Yesterday, Hiram and I spent two hours looking at it, consulting it, showing them what I know, showing them what was done. And having a path going forward as to what we're gonna do to fix the system. The good thing is he's worked on the system before. Back in the days of Brookline Elementary School, he had, if you probably didn't see this, he had tagged everything in place. What was the return line? What was the supply line? The booklet that's next to the boilers, he made up. We had long discussions about understanding all of that and the maintenance. I'm not, can't, don't, don't have to get into a blow by blow. After meeting, if anybody's got any specific questions, I'm sure I'll be able to answer. But he did say several things which I felt were pretty poignant. The first thing was, he felt that the, the system, the air, air exchanger system that's below the old building was, in those days, state of the art. It was just really done well. That's good. But the other side's a mess. Whoever, when they, when they did the addition, the way it was done, there's a lot of deadheaded pipes causing banging. There is a lot of issues to try to figure out how you're gonna get the banging out of it because a lot of the pipes are in the walls and floors. He has ideas on how to rectify that. Before I also, before all this started, I had made copies of all the guys who I said, give me the Reader's Digest version. Pete Noble gave me the encyclopedia version. I copied it all, highlighted a bunch of stuff and gave a whole thing for them to read. Scramble it up and read it. And try to analyze how we can fix this system because there are registers that are disconnected. There are pipes that are still banging. We've had leak issues. We've had zone valve issues. We've had thermostat issues. And we're in the process of trying to straighten all of that out. So he's coming up with a plan and trying to understand what's working and what isn't working. And he's also analyzing the two ground falls pumps that are next, that are both the boilers, one doing the old building, one doing the new building to see if that can be adjusted. There's things that he feels that he can do to rectify those issues on the old, of the new building that other than ripping out pipes and putting in zone valves and doing leaf valves and all of that stuff, which is not feasible because of, you can't get to it. So this analysis is underway. He's analyzing it on his own time and then he's gonna come in and meet with me. And so we're gonna have a constant communication between the two of us going forward as to what, how the work's gonna progress. Okay, just one second now. Maybe, well, I might have a few questions. It's got a really tired system banging. Uh, I think it was huge. I think we're gonna find out it was huge that Pete Noble did a yeoman's job, but the system needs to be changed on that side. It's not right. It's never been right. That's the end of that. Um. Then, two things. He was really critical about a, a, a lot of the work that had been done on that side. But he also said, and he knew this before, but was stopped working on the system years ago and he remembered it. The chimney, the one that the, that the gas goes out of, was put in upside down.
And he put the chimney in upside down.
Oh, yeah, he showed me, the arrow. They did it. Yeah, he showed it to me.
It's a metal chimney.
It's a metal, it's a metal, it's a chopper.
Comes out the building over on the north side.
And it can cause issues with cotton, moisture coming down the outside, but since it hasn't over the course of the last ah, let me see, the last time it was, Brookline Elementary School, I wanna think it was two thousand and eight-ish. So he was here before then and he, and he remembered from then and he walked me right over to the chimney. See that? See that little arrow? It's going in the wrong direction. That being said, when we started this whole discussion, he said to me this. He said, I have no, uh, interest in your decision to what to do with the boilers. But if it were me and knowing the system, I would have a plan. Because this, these boilers are, are over thirty years old now. And they're cast iron boilers and the, and the projected life form is thirty-five, forty years. Uh, when La Land Set made the, uh, the analysis as Stan's nodding, probably remembers, on that list, life expectancy, one year. And that was twenty fourteen. So back then, the select board didn't wanna make that change with, uh, with Kim Smith of Region, uh, Wyndham Regional to go through a wood chip system, wood boilers, um, health system or whatever it was at the time.
Who couldn't afford that?
Pardon me?
Who couldn't afford that? That's three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, no, 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 it wasn't anything like that.
Anyway.
Anyway, um, so now we're seven years advanced. And that boiler is, is in excess of thirty years old. It's something we have to have discussion down the road. It doesn't have to be now. Um, and right now it's working. There is no leaks, which is a good thing. Everything's functioning from that standpoint, from the boiler standpoint. It's just a matter of getting the HVAC system straightened out and get, and like I told him, I wanna holler like Benny. That's my cat. I wanna hum. I want, I'm sick of this. I'm sick of hearing complaints about banging noises. I'm sick of running over here because of leaks and zone vents and thermostats. We're gonna go over this thing one by one, room by room, zone by zone valve by zone valve, thermostat by thermostat and get it right. Because this has been going on for seven years with me. This has nothing to do with Pat Mase, what he went through prior to that. He was going crazy too. So I'm repeating myself, but I'll put it at the end of here, at this. Is that system on that, on the, which is working, but it makes noise and now we have a leak and I don't know, needs to be refixed. Yes.
If it's okay with the select board, I'm gonna, I have some time in the next week or so, I'll contact Katie Buckley and talk to her about some arbor finances that can be used for backup system or for replacing anything. See, see if this is a, a project that, that might just get, just get a nod, yes or no. It's something that we can consider. We have arbor money that has to be dedicated.
For child, for a building that currently houses a childcare
Definitely.
business, which is a well, no, which legitimately is, uh, there's, is, right, exactly. I mean, there are a lot of, you read a lot of the arbor stuff and they lead you to believe that, you know.
My concern is to see.
Businesses that were deemed essential during COVID and after are there's more flexibility for spending money related to that. And so it might be, so what finding out, she can say.
Really not. Yes, I'm gonna reach out to her. I don't know if it makes a difference who owns the building, but I'll be very clear about that. So hopefully, you know, uh, moving forward. That is a concern that Suzie had as far as, you know, including us to the goal to continue the lease. However, it does depend on what changes will be presented, including the fact that she's, you know, concerned about the heating issues. So we're, we're, we're not slapping off.
I'm guessing, I'm thinking thirty thousand dollars. That's my guess, to, to replace that system.
Boiler.
Yes, boilers.
Boilers, etc. Just to
Yes.
not taking care of the issues with the new wing.
No, that's what I mean. Exactly. The, the way to do it, and I really got into hiring about this, I got into, Pete Noble, as Pete Noble said this originally, is the way to do this, get the system to work. How it makes working. Then if you gotta change your boiler, you change your boiler. And, and it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. It might not happen on our, our tenure. It's gonna happen, without a doubt. And he specifically said, cast iron boilers, life is thirty-five, forty years. So we're living on borrowed time. Um, he was great. I was really pleased with him. We have spent a fair amount of, you're gonna see it in the AP warrants so far for basically
Little years.
Little. And I'm done with it. I want it fixed. And I'm gonna watch every move that's made and try and get this, so that this is running correctly. And I'm gonna use Mark's, Mark's not gonna have to do a lot of work, other than we found some other things about the maintenance assistance that was never done right. I mean, the filters are supposed to be changed. Are you ready for this? Once a month? We pulled out two twelve-inch filters yesterday that was this thick with gray matters.
Why?
The air filters, about the air filters.
On the exchange system.
Yep, about, yep. And some of them, the big ones on the, on the air exchange are okay. We did regularly general, general ventilation filters. The twelve-inch guys that we replaced back in September, that thick mark, you wouldn't have.
I really don't need to get into that because this is like Greek.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Well, it isn't, but
It isn't.
Except we're also an hour and a half into a meeting that we haven't yet.
Yep, and if anybody has any more questions, I'd be happy to answer after, after the meeting. We trust you. I appreciate, I appreciate the trust. I'm trying not to make any mistakes, but this is very, very difficult to understand because it's flexing things all the time. Well, if this pipe doesn't work and if this water doesn't go this way and if it's not to temperature this way, this is gonna happen. You do this zone valve and it gets a little much.
Well, that's what, yeah.
Quickly, I agree with everything everyone has offered here today, your idea, David's thoughts. Uh, I, and I'm glad, I feel for you because you're, you have all these hours really with these staff. Just to throw out an idea. Is there a way with things current, flexible lines, et cetera, that a system could be redesigned, replacing, just cutting it, sealing it up to fix all of those problems with new appropriate equipment? So you don't have C depending upon A, which is a mislocation, which is odd and influenced by being close to the sill of the building and, and all this other crap. You've got guys that are going in there. What would you put in here if you had to do it all or from new? And see what happens.
That's what's kind of, that, well, that's what's kinda happening now. Is to buy, like, I stand, try, I don't wanna answer. I'll do, that's a kind of answering system, it's another definition. But basically, the bypass, say, has already been some bypassing that he gave back when.
I, I don't need to know all that. I just wanted to express an idea.
Okay. I think it's a great idea.
Get an estimate and get an estimate.
Well, yeah, and, and like I say, we'll find out what, what we can do, but, yeah.
Yeah, cause I think the issue is just that one side.
And not a formal one, just say, what do you, what do you think of it?
Right. But what he's gonna do is make recommendations to me to bypass without having to rip everything out. It's just not so much running.
That's right, same to my, great.
Yeah, so that's what we're pursuing at this point.
Thank you very much. I don't have much time to devote to that project.
Ooh, oh my darn.
Select board would like to, uh, share, uh, anything that they've done. Now, Sandy, when you took, you, you were able to sit in on the, um, uh, webinar yesterday, we've been here at the FEMA night, so it was good?
Yeah, it was, it was very, very helpful. And it looks like Friday is gonna be the day we're gonna meet, uh, legislature's gonna vote fine to doing this. Uh, I think Mr. Sen, yes, no, I'm Senator, it's not the Sen.
Okay, this weekend.
So this week we will know what it is and, uh, supposedly if you log into the state legislature.
Guy, what was the webinar you did today?
If they were here, what they're talking about, you got it handled or what?
Uh, that was the rental for the IRS.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it was very good and I'm glad I did it. And, uh, uh, there were things that, um, were mentioned today by David that they also have referenced, uh, the other day as well.
Right. And so some, like, something, like, I do, we do share the, those resources with you and and some of them are half an hour, some of them are an hour. They really look, you can have it on while you're having lunch. You'll just listen to it like a radio podcast. You don't have to show your face on, on the theater, but they, they are. Okay, we're gonna move on. Any other select board members would like to share anything? No?
Try and describe it, yes.
Uh, Mr. E. Mark Bills, road supervisor, um, Putney Mountain Road use in the winter. We discussed some concerns. You wanna share it with? Uh Mr. E. Mark Bills, road supervisor, um putting out road use in the winter. We discussed some concerns. You wanna share it with the selectmen and come up with some ideas?
Sure, um. Uh uh message from Johnny Swing about traffic still using Putney Mountain Road and. That night that he called, two different record services had come off the hill. Uh found out who obviously pulled vehicles back into the road. And his concern about, you know, lack of snow and no maintenance to the roads, you know, which was wondering if. There's something that could be done to uh help deter traffic from using the mountain. And since I've uh been working on the roads here in Brookline to try different things. Um I made a phone call to Archie, talked it over with him. We can't legally close the road because the road goes from one town to another. And other towns have same issues. If it was an in-town road, this went from in-town to in-town is different, but because. It legally takes you from our town to another, we can't block it. We tried, before we knew this, we we tried blocks, we tried piles of gravel. Uh there's always been signage, but people don't tend to notice the signs or don't look at them. Uh so we're wondering what are our options? Now, today I I, as Dot mentioned earlier, we um. Because of these thaws we're getting now, uh we've started applying just plain crush stone over the areas that are. The favorite mud spots, mud spots that appear and it seems to be helping. So I was on Putney Mountain at the end of the day today, applying crushed stone. And several cars came down in Massachusetts and there were some pretty luxurious cars that are coming down and I.
Cause GPS is.
Yes.
GPS, it's a definite shortcut. And um, you know, I drove up uh on. Tuesday, just to check the road and it is very passable. However, the shade here is. Have ice and I spun a few times in places. And it's different once you're, you come up to the top from Putney. And you start down over, you kinda have to keep coming if it's, you know, slippery. So what sort of options does the select board?
Do we, I mean, I guess I suggest, can we reach out to? I don't know if it's the kind of thing that Mark Pickering or somebody with V-Trans would have. Other ideas of things which, something we could do that would be both legal. I mean, obviously, I, it seems crazy to me that we can't block it. But if we can, I don't know what the what the alternatives are. Can we do it conjunction with?
Putney, well, Putney.
Well, we have talked about me and when there's snow.
Yeah, right.
They will jam the snowbank.
Right, we can pass, but if there's no snow.
And that will hinder some traffic. Some will push.
Although people still drive up and over that.
It's.
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 Then.
Or localized.
Then I feel like if you do that, you.
Deserve what you get.
You deserve whatever happens.
At your own risk.
But in situ, to Mark's point, in situations like this, there are people all the time, I mean, I go to the bottom of it, I even see people who. Come down who clearly you can smell their car at my house because they clearly didn't know what they were getting onto. And right, GPS takes you, and on a day like today. If you were up at the Putney side, you would have no idea probably. Cause of course Putney maintains their side, so you go all the way up there, thinking the road is fine. So I don't really fault people who get stuck with it, but.
Yeah.
What do our signs?
Maybe there's some other way we can, I don't know what else we can do.
Sign.
What do our signs say up there?
Not leaving no road maintenance from October first to to May first.
That's it? Well, then we need to say the signs is warning, extremely dangerous travel during the. Not maintained, rather.
Double it on.
We have not maintained.
I I use that road quite a bit during the, during reasonable part of the year. I would suggest if we have an agreement with Putney, maybe you could put a sign just as you're coming off West Hill before you go, go over Putney Mountain Road. Saying right there, the road to Brookline is closed. It's dangerous to go over during the winter or something along that that line.
Proceed at your own risk.
Don't.
No, don't even. No.
Ignore your GPS or whatever.
Yeah.
Since we're required to have it open, what limit, what liability are we at as a town? If if we put a sign up like that and they still go over and they have damage.
I would think the sign would cover us for liability. If we had something stating, you know, no winter maintenance, uh travel at home risk.
Well, I mean, I.
Made it up and obvious enough.
I would hope that whatever we've have had historically for signage would already cover us.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
I hope, although that's something we should probably.
Yeah.
We should probably double check that.
I highlighted it with bright orange red activity. And people have to notice that it's there.
I mean, the other thing is the reality is that you know this, I know this. I mean, I know. Multiple people in this town who are still, who have still been driving up and over it, even when it's.
Questionable.
Questionable. Um so even people who know what kind of road it is are pushing it at times because it's not blocked. So.
As Steve.
And we genuinely can't block it and.
I did suggest something to Mark it. I don't know how, if it would just be. It's, I I've seen at the hardware stores, you can get these looks of chain link, chain, white plastic. And tree to tree with a danger. Platform, maybe one or two of them. If it's an emergency and someone has to go through, they can drive through it and break the chain. But otherwise you have to get out immediately to get by it. And I think it maybe stop people from continuing down the path. I don't know.
I think you're still gonna have to.
We don't think that that would be.
It's not, no, it's plastic. It's not going to restrict a fire truck or anything.
Well, I know, I guess I would, I would wanna know whether that's something that.
Mark Pickering would probably.
V-Trans would say this is legal for us.
Yeah.
I'm not sure something like that.
Well, we're still gonna have to educate the idea that you gotta GPS issue. Yeah.
Yes, but in the winter time, it automatically is considered a vast snowmobile trail. So there will be snowmobilers going and that's something, you know.
You can't put something across because it can.
It's a liability.
Always.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm I'm sure he's right.
Yeah.
No, you're right. I didn't even know about.
Well, no, I I don't personally think it makes sense, but it's not surprising.
Anytime that we put a block up, it's considered a liability.
Right, because if somebody slams into the.
It is put up, but it's considered, uh, you know, summer use only. A sign that says summer use only.
Seasonal.
Is is there anyone, whoever this information came from, is there a way of checking it? Because when I was a priest, I'd go over to Strat and there's a road that goes from Stratton over to Arlington.
Right.
And it is.
Oh, yeah.
In America.
Yep.
And and so I'm wondering, how would they get anyone?
Uh, they don't block it up. They they plow down to it. That's considered a vast snowmobile trail. They have their sign up that says.
Says road closed.
Road not passable longer months.
Yeah, they didn't close it, but it's not jammed.
Yeah, so just a week ago, their foreman told me that they had a car travel up three miles on snowmobile. Trail and got stuck and had to be recovered by special vehicle. But that was the sign, you know, three foot.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and there are things I know that you can say, you can have it in gold and that it's still.
Yeah.
You're in.
And and at the same time, we have the same issue on Allen Ware, which is a seasonal road. So and people continue to use that one.
That's in good shape though. I went there a week ago cautiously, cause I know.
Well, it's at least flat.
Yeah.
It's a big difference.
But you know, it's the West River and it's always a dangerous.
Yeah.
It's um, you know.
You gotta, it's pretty stupid though. It's it's pretty well protected, Allen Ware Road. It's not anything like Putney.
I'm not wanting to speak for anybody, I'm sure Johnny Swing is is trying to be very humane about this and all, but. Looking at things from a practical point of view, there's a lot of laws and people shouldn't be doing this, that, and the other thing. But it still happens. Who's going around looking to enforce these kinds of things?
Yeah.
And what penalty do we have if we?
Exactly.
You know, I mean, being realistic to to ourselves and Putney being the other other end of this thing. Uh I mean, what becomes of it? I mean.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do is what?
Yeah, but yeah, basically, what are they gonna?
Maybe just some bigger signage that explains the road.
Yeah, I think what you were saying.
Do the best you can.
Ball, extremely dangerous, your GPS is wrong.
I love that.
That's a really good thing. When they get there, they're like, oh.
Gwen's getting a little excited over it.
I do, I love it.
I know.
If I hadn't. But yeah. Right, can direct, road not pass, they sent him over that, they didn't.
Yeah.
So we'll talk to you about that, and again, uh, yes.
Really? Really?
Can you reach out to Mark?
I.
And if I had.
I do think asking Mark, cause maybe he's, don't do it. Maybe he remembers, like, what's the closest thing to putting a barrier up? We could get away with that.
Right, or or if it's seasonal. And it's that dangerous, can we gate it? You know, like the uh, like the power company does. They put a gate up when they don't find people using the power line as an access.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Uh can we do that to a seasonal road?
Hmm.
You know.
Yeah, right.
Would you?
But I will.
Would you talk to Mark about that?
Sure.
And then I think we can come up with some wording and and I don't know how long, the site wouldn't be able to get a sign for this winter.
It would probably take two to three weeks.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be able to get it in the ground.
Yeah, I probably have to get the trees.
Two to three. All right, well, we'll talk about the sign, but if you check with Mark about gating it or that, that's a great idea.
Okay. Um so that's our other topics. Um so as everybody knows, our mud seasons are coming around a little more regularly, a little earlier. Than usual, um. And usually it's not till spring, but we've already had a couple of minor. Uh issues where the roads are in in the direct sunlight and warm temperatures, so um. You know, when when they go from a frozen state to a thawed state. Uh if cars are leaving ruts and I go out with equipment to try and repair the areas that are not right at the beginning of the road, but. Closer to the other end, I leave bigger ruts. There's not much I can do except wait for the right temperature and go out. And as it's freezing, at its freezing point, I can scrape it flat. And in hopes that it freezes into that position that can be plowed and driven on with ease, um. So the only other thing is to bring the crushed stone that we use to match the top of the the mud. And we've started uh making a stockpile, which we now have, which was. Hopefully, uh was not gonna be utilized till spring, but because we're getting these minor thaws. We started applying some of the stone. And the stone that we're using, the size stone, comes from the Jamaica pit, uh Sursasino Industries. And um their season ends. Uh tomorrow afternoon. They they gate it, they close their pit down till springtime, which uh was told April would be the opening date unless some emergency event. So um after talking with uh Dot, the idea at the office, um. Knowing that generally we we do this maintenance in the spring. Uh so we talked about applying it now. It was supposed to warm up a little bit more this week and I thought, well, if it. The roads had froze to the point where we could apply it and then hopefully it freezes there. And when we do get this next uh, it'll already be in place. So today spent a whole day applying crushed stone over these areas that already showed uh rutting. And um. I have room for a little bit more tomorrow. Pit's closing tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock. So I have a couple more places I would like to uh go ahead and put this crushed stone. And hopefully that's gonna put us ahead of schedule in the spring. We won't have to spend as much in the spring, but we're putting it out now. So uh that was today. I also went out um Sunday night and uh. Was our first freeze in a time that would allow the equipment to get out there and do its job without creating more. Issues.
I hope you didn't take, like, sending you a text asking you about how the roads are as me being pussy or anything like that. I was just curious, cause I know that you're looking out for the dirt roads.
Right.
And then you went out that night and I said, oh.
Yeah, no, I I continue to, you know, I I check in with Archie. I said, are towns, towns roads holding up? Because when he can't maintain them as a snow cloud guy, then I step back in and try to do what I can, so. I've been working with Archie and I've been monitoring the roads uh either in the morning or at night or both. And watching the the wind channel very close, so. We uh kind of work together. And I get Archie's uh experience and and we work together to try and figure out that issue. So we were already planning to do something and then uh put this all together and. The board, so with Dot there, we went ahead and. Uh started this program, so hopefully our winter comes back on track to its normal average winter and. We get a free job once you there and and we still have a small quantity of stockpile asset for us to use when the time comes for that. And it's material that is mine and I.
Right.
It's there for the roads. Once it's applied onto the road, it's never gonna melt away, wash away, uh so to speak. It's it's there for a base.
Is there a seasonal cost difference for buying it now versus buying it next April? Is it more expensive then because it's dated then? So you'd difficulty there?
I think the price just is is the price it is. It it comes up with inflation. I'm sure next year with the cost of of uh fuels and. The what it takes to make it, everything is gonna, the price will be a little more and a little more, but. Uh no, I think it's a steady price until we get the inflated cost of living added to it. Um let's see. Uh I've also uh started to look into uh rentals for the mowing, roadside mowing. It's something that we do every year. I had talked to our over the rail mower rental people. And um they have us logged in, not definite, but uh reserved a a week. First week of July was what I was hoping for mowing, for our first mowing. And um that's with an over the rail mower that was, I believe, thirty two hundred dollars for a week, one week, forty hours. But I'm trying to check out the options of the other machines that may come with a mower. And then compare on how what our best uh way to go would be on that. And when I, when I get something I feel is uh a good deal, I will bring it to the board and.
I think we're gonna be needing to rent an excavator for uh work this summer for, I think, certainly more like six weeks or so. Because of the FEMA work that needs to be caught up and FEMA does reverse, is that a hundred percent for that? So that would be good.
No, that.
Um we're we're also. Now on our second load of salt, which was replenished, had our salt check. We haven't uh dug into it yet. This is a new fresh uh load of salt. The bay is full. Um our sand base right now filled back. Um, our sand base right now filled back up to plenty, so. So I think we're in good shape for that. And then the other thing is we're, we're continuing when I, I've met with FEMA's meetings with Dot and Guy and, um, with Dot, Guy and Dot's professionalism and elegance, uh, now is putting this through very quickly. And, uh, we had to cancel a couple of meetings due to some issues on our representative's side. And we were nervous about how's that gonna affect our deadline, but he seems to think we're right on track with, uh, all our information. You know, Dot's gone out and GPSed everything. She made notes at every, every stop and she felt these insights helped to, to get all this logged in. And now is, uh,
You did very nice.
Working well and it's like we're strong in space. That makes everything.
Okay, excellent. Um, I don't know if we need to vote on this. Do we need to vote on this or can I just describe?
Um, it's basically, we do it every year, but you can just, uh, make them aware because it's, uh, it helps.
I can add this to the agenda right now. I'm going to sign and pass around for everyone else to sign. It's a certificate of highway miles for the year ending February tenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have had no changes in the amount of, uh, highways, uh, in central town. We have, uh, four point nine five class two roads of mileage, uh, eleven point nine one plus three roads for a total of sixteen point eight six miles of, uh, roadway. Uh, we have one point four seven miles of class four. And we have one mile of illegal trail. And these are the same statistics that were used in the past. So I'm gonna sign it and then there's spaces for everyone else. And then Guy's going to send it in to the state. Okay, so that was.
Will you make a copy for, for, for your file?
Well, I'm gonna probably fax it, I may fax it. Uh, whatever, one way or the other, I'll make a copy.
All right, while they're passing that away, round, I'm just gonna go over the mail. More free public libraries. Dated December twenty-seventh. Uh, I was thankful for receiving the three hundred dollar appropriation back in August. Valley Cares. Um, sent a letter under Roger Alby and sent a letter to four Valley Cares to say that, was they are looking for any donations? So this is available if anybody would like to look at that to Valley Cares. Um, the state of Vermont sent to me dated December twenty-third, the two thousand twenty-one equalization study results, the education grant list is big numbers, seventy-two million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. The equalized education grant list is seventy-four million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars. The common level of appraisal, the CLA, is ninety-seven point five seven percent or as they say, zero point nine seven five seven. And the coefficient of dispersion, the COD, is eleven point oh six percent.
Well, yes, CLA is the, uh, you know, common level of appraisal. And basically, if you're below a hundred, that means you're undervalued. If you're over a hundred, that means you're overvalued. And when you're undervalued, the education task goes a little higher because they're basing upon a hundred percent. But if you're within twenty points one way or the other, uh, you're what they consider okay. But you go above twenty, a hundred and twenty or below eighty, that triggers an automatic appraisal.
And so we're right within that.
Right, but we'll have, we'll probably have a big, uh, not a big, uh, we'll have a spike in, um, education, which we have every year anyway. That's, you know, you know about that, Stan, uh, you can probably elaborate on that.
I'm not gonna elaborate, but you're, what you said is accurate.
All right, um, moving on then, communications, uh, regular mail. We just went over the email. I already told you Gary Ward, a sense of suggestion, and David Parker said he would help with that. Uh, I told you about the visiting nurse letter and Dan Towler's email on the recycling. So at this point, I'd like to go through the pay orders.
Great payoff for us.
Yes. Uh, payroll. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-six dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of two thousand, six hundred three dollars and sixty-nine cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty-twenty-two twenty-six were two thousand, six hundred three dollars and sixty-nine cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
Before you touch upon the accounts payable, do, does anyone know what the rescue bill for thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty as well?
Yes. I just saw it was attached here to my back. Uh, uh, Rescue Inc. is keeping flat budgeting, uh, their bill to the town of Newthing for the first year, three years. The second year of the contract, it will go up one percent. And the third year of the contract, it will go up one percent. So that amount is for for Rescue Inc.'s, or the contract we got with them.
The increase, the one percent?
There's no increase last year. It's flat funded for this year.
So this is the same amount that occurred the same time last year?
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe so. I went to a meeting in Brownboro, um, in November, beginning in November, and this is what it was about. We're not running it and, um, this is member of town's participation in town's consortium. Yeah, the meeting was on September sixteenth. Okay. And another three-year contract. Um, that's it, yeah, one percent annual increase. And a bottom two years.
Thank you for explaining.
Sorry about that, it was stuff in the back, which we already talked about. Okay, uh, now we did receive two different accounts payable, uh, emails. The second one, uh, which Michael Masters sent out, uh, was not in this, this format, it wasn't in this long format, it's in the regular format, horizontal. And he has, uh, given a couple of things, which I sort of liked where he did check totals because
Yes.
one check covered seven items, seven invoices or whatever, so he, he.
We've always done that.
I, 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 looks good. I didn't notice it before, but I was having to see it.
I didn't notice it, right.
I wish it was a little bit bigger type, but, um, here and there. I am going to, um, make a motion to approve. You have to do it during discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I know you're gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve uh, accounts payable warrant twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-seven dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents. May I have a second?
This is thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven cents.
Sorry for second.
Seconded by David, any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to, uh, change to the amendment.
You wanna make an amendment?
Amendment to the amendment.
What's the amendment for?
The amendment is for, uh, the request that I made to pay a bill of seven hundred fifty dollars to Coda and Coda that, uh, the treasurer didn't pay. They paid the other ones, but they didn't pay a statement. And I specifically told Judy in bold letters, please pay the statement as well as the invoices.
I have the inventory.
I don't think that make, okay, I, I don't, can we see this stuff that you're talking about?
That's the email. What is the statement, where is the statement? We don't have the statement, where?
I have it at home and, and, and Guy has one too, I believe.
Do you have a?
I don't know, I don't, it must be in a coder and coder, uh, okay. I, I, I'm thinking, I, I don't know what you do, fish it out.
It was dated eleven thirty, seven hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah, right, that was the four thirty-five and three fifteen.
Right, part of that was the, the total care plan.
Right.
And two hours of work, of work.
So that wouldn't have anything to do with what we're voting on right now? That's gonna put into the next one. What's, what's like?
So it's, it's for invoices that are not included in this.
It, that's correct.
Could it not wait till the next pay period?
Well, I promise them that we pay.
Oh, okay, no, I'm just, because normally it's like thirty days to the treasurer.
I've specifically laid it right out at the heading of it was in bold letters. Please pay this statement as well as these invoices dated this date for this amount, which is what you can see.
Well, in fairness to the treasurer, that coder and coder thing's been a catch and washes for the last
That's right.
month because there was double billing and wrong accounts and so forth.
This is what clarified. The question, the concern that Bruce has is that the service contract is what wasn't paid for. And for us to continue to get a discount for the service halls, that service contract has to be paid for. So this came to me by October, by November thirtieth was when the town was billed. And we did not pay the bills because there was a mix-up that they were using the town of Brookline Town Hall's contract number instead of the Suzie's Little Peanuts contract number. So in the past two weeks, Bruce has worked on clearing it up, itemizing it in this email and it's still down. So it's important to Bruce, and I understand, to stay face. He said that in order for us to make, to continue with the discount, we have to amend the current accounts payable and have them send out a check tomorrow, this week for that other statement for the, okay, account, care.
So that's supposed to guy would have to, to?
Judy would have to do it, but Guy would sign it now.
Okay, so then what's the actual amendment to this that's being amended?
Okay, so I amend, so the amendment is to add
Seven hundred fifty dollars.
To
Whatever the total that you have there.
To, to pay Coda and Coda an additional seven hundred and fifty dollars to cover the total pair service contract as well as three hours of labor for three hundred and fifteen dollars.
Exactly.
Which was due October, uh, uh, November thirtieth.
The amount is twenty thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents amended. As the amended number.
Okay. All right, so.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so we did the motion, second.
Well, second that amendment.
David seconded the amendment to increase the accounts payable by seven hundred and fifty dollars for a total of, what was that number again, Stan?
Twenty thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the amended accounts payable warrant twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-seven dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-two for twenty thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. May I have a, okay, okay, now we're just voting, right?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye to this amended, amended accounts payable warrant.
Aye.
Aye.
Any, oh, what, any opposed? Hearing none, the amended warrant has passed.
From you to have to let Guy know what he's got to do for.
I can tell him.
Getting another.
I can tell him. Uh, he's probably, he's looking for the invoice right now. I have copies of every one of these invoices and the stuff that was covered that we weren't billed for as well. Going back to the inception of when I started.
I am going to, um, pass this around, you decide it. I am also going to attach this email, which has the summary here.
Is that the summary with that additional?
Yes, so you want to sign that and then, uh, we'll hand that back in. As that is going around, uh, I would like to, uh, say that we will, I would like to plan for a special meeting on Wednesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M. Here at Town Hall to finalize, uh, those items needed to be finalized before town meeting, which includes the warning, the voting and, um,
The budget.
Budget. Okay, we will also have a regular select board meeting on Wednesday, January nineteenth. We'll talk about that. Um, as they.
The agenda for that meeting should be very small.
Yes.
Because we're gonna have to vote a lot of town meeting and warning related.
On the nineteenth, we'll just, we'll just streamline it.
So we should probably avoid.
Any extra stuff.
Additional things, but things that can be pushed out should be pushed out.
We'll do it. All right, well, that's going around. Um, I am going to say that I'd like to make a motion at this time to find a, uh, premature general public knowledge regarding the town's lease contract with Suzie's Little Peanuts owner, Suzie Carter Marsh was placed in town in this management because the select board risks disclosing its negotiation strategies as it discusses the proposed contract terms in public. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Bruce, uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of approving that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, I'd like to make a second motion. We need at this time to enter into an executive session to discuss the town's lease contract with Suzie Carter Marsh under the provisions of Title One, Section two twelve A one A of the Vermont statutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave, and any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of going into executive session, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? At this time, the select board is going to recess into executive session. The time now is eight forty-four. When we come out of executive session, uh, we will be adjourned the meeting at that time. Any questions? Okay, we're gonna have a brief recess of three minutes before we start executive session. Thank you. There have been no motions or
Actions.
actions taken nor any executive session. At this time, I would like
Make an amendment.
To make a motion to approve the original accounts payable warrant twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-two for the original amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David, any discussion?
The discussion, I think it would be important to just clarify. Upon further investigation, we have determined that the coder and coder invoices totaling seven hundred fifty dollars that we thought had not been paid actually have been paid. So we no longer needed to amend this, let's back to the original map.
Okay, thank you for the discussion. At this time, all those in favor of approving the original accounts payable warrant for nineteen thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any extensions? Hearing none, the motion passes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's regular select board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of adjourned this evening's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, the time is nine ten P M. Thank you all very much.